Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We call the meeting in the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting room properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
I see evidence, yeah. Mr. Parkin, good to see you, sir. Let us stand now for our prayer and pledge. Mr. Moulis is going to lead us in our prayer, and then we'll all do the pledge together.
Let us pray. Kind and most benevolent Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and your bountiful blessings. We thank you for this new season of new beginnings. We pray, Father God, that you would come down and indwell this body with the wisdom, the knowledge, the insight that they need, Father God, as they transgress the business of this community. We pray for our new president, Father God, and his administration. And, Father God, we pray today we can all be together as one country, one body, one unity. As we thank you for in the powerful and penetrating name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Armfield, I forgot. I'm all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. I got a new trainee back here I gotta work with. I gotta work with him. The chair would like to acknowledge the presence of Chairman Emeritus John D. McIver. Mr. Brown, if you can make that notice in our records, I appreciate that, sir. Chairman McIver, good to see you, sir. Glad to have you here. You continue to serve our community, and we appreciate your dedication to Liberty County. We'll go on our agenda. Departmental reports, finance, Mr. Kim McGlothlin.
All agenda, too.
Yes, it is. We're gonna keep it that way.
Okay, I'll be quick about it.
Don't you be the one.
I'll be quick about it. So, at the end of December, we have achieved about thirty percent of our budgeted revenues, and we have exhausted about fifty percent of our total budget expenditures. So, we are literally right on target with expenditures, which is good because that tells us we didn't over-budget. Because if you always, you're always under-budget, you always wonder if you didn't over-budget and therefore set the millage rate too high. But we are right on target. However, within that, there are some departments that are running ahead of schedule, and there are savings in other departments that help compensate that. At the end of December 31st, you have approximately 2.8 months' worth of operational expenditures in your undesignated and unreserved fund balance. One year ago this time, you were at 2.5 months. So, again, we're right on target, right where we need to be, a little bit better than we were last year this time. Couple of those departments that are either running ahead of schedule on their expenditures or fixing to run out of expenditures, and I brought them up before, most notably elections. Their total budget is $568,000, and they have, to date, at the end of December, spent $522,000, almost $523,000. So, they've spent almost ninety-two percent of their budget at the end of December. They will run out of money. I've told you this last few months coming before you, and that'll be something that we need to address and amend that budget because they probably, maybe by the end of January or February, they will be completely out of money. A couple other departments, finance, running slightly ahead of schedule at fifty-two percent, and that is due to payment of our auditors for the annual audit. So, in the next month or two, we'll come right back in line. I've mentioned before risk management. That's where we pay the liability, the general liability insurance for the county one time upfront in the fall. So, that's continuing to run slightly ahead of schedule. But you can see it's already coming back in line at fifty percent, fifty point seven percent. Governmental buildings running slightly ahead of schedule, and that's due primarily to the HVAC carrier unit that was put in at the East End Center. So, that skewed their budget for a little bit. I do expect them to come back in line. And then there's a couple other departments. As you know, we make those one-time payments. Your Coastal Georgia Regional Development Center, where we pay those dues once a year. Superior Court, where we pay the law clerk expenses once a year. And then your Circuit Wide Public Defender, where we have to make a prepayment. So, they continue to kind of run ahead schedule, but by the end of the year, they will be in line. And you've got your law enforcement training, which is a brand-new department this year, and I'm not sure if they're going to continue to maintain that department or roll that into the Sheriff's Department. That'll all kind of fall out when we go through the budget process. Excuse me. But that was a new budget this year, and that budget didn't have a whole lot in it except some personnel expenditures budgeted. So, they're running over in overtime, education and training, and ammunition. Emergency management, they're running slightly ahead of schedule also because of the F-150 they purchased. Roads, road department also running ahead of schedule because of a purchase of the excavator and the truck and trailer. And then business and licensing also running a little ahead of schedule when they purchased their truck. Whenever you make a large capital purchase, it kind of throws your department into a negative variance for a month or two, and then you come back in line. And as I mentioned before, we did not have a budget for the census coordinator. That was, I guess, negotiated to continue on, even though that wasn't something that we prepared and realized we were going to do when we adopted our budget. That is another budget that we will have to amend before the end of the year. And then other finances and uses. This is where we had to transfer money out for the East End Fire Station and also transfer money out to sustain 911 operations. At the end of December, solid waste is running at a slight deficit. They've got a net loss of about $60,000 so far. We expect that to turn around now that tax bills have gone out, and we'll get some of those solid waste assessments in there. So, I believe that'll turn around in the next month or two. And then within the solid waste department, your solid waste disposal operations running slightly ahead of schedule, too, only by about a percent. And that's due to the waste and haul disposal for trash services and also for professional services that we just finished paying for the solid waste cost study, which was definitely needed. I'm glad we did it because we've adjusted those assessments. That will go out on the assessment notices. We do that about once every five years. We adjust, well, we review the rates. We don't adjust them. We haven't adjusted the solid waste assessments in years, but we did finally end up adjusting them, and those will go out on the new assessments in the spring. Your 911 operations running slightly ahead of schedule at about fifty-two percent, and that is due to the annual payment made to Motorola for their radios and phones and then a little bit more overtime than normal right now. Splosts still looking great. For the month of December, which actually represents November collections, we're about $75,000 over budget, so that's great. We actually received $831,000, and we had only budgeted to receive $755,000. So, looking real good in splosts. And TAVT, we got our second month of distribution. In November, we had $721,000. In December, we got $777,000. So, T-splosts is looking good, too. That's all I have for your December report unless somebody has a question for me.
I do want to follow up. You mentioned, and I promise you, Ms. Martin, it's not just because you and, I think I saw Ms. Terry and Ms. McIver here. When you talk about the Board of Elections budget, and they were exhausted, so how do we proactively approach that? Obviously, it's going to have to come out of the general fund.
It will come out of the general fund. You can do a couple of things. You can go ahead and amend your budget now if you want, or you can continue to let a deficit accumulate. And then towards the end of the fiscal year, you could amend it to see how much you actually need to amend your budget by because at that point, we'll be able to see what type of savings are realized in other departments so that we can use some of those, we can shift some of those savings over and cover that shortfall, or you can amend it, you know, next month or the month after and increase your overall budget. Typically, what we've done is we've waited till later in the year, but we've never had a department exhaust their budget this early in the year. Because of all of the mandates from the COVID-19 and all the runoffs, I don't think anybody could have anticipated the amount of expenses that would have been incurred in elections. So, again, I can get moved, Mr. Brown. We can amend it for as much as we know, at least with salary and benefits, or we can wait until maybe the April or May timeframe and see just how much we need and see what some other savings are.
Is there a benefit to doing it either way?
Personally, I think I would probably go ahead and amend it in the next month or two so they don't run in a complete red. But I'm not sure. The fear of that is amending it twice. Because you're gonna have, if you don't, if you don't do enough, and then we get to the end of the year, we're gonna have to cover it again.
I guess the justification is that you know why you're amending it, though. You're not amending it for
frivolous.
Yes.
No. You're definitely not.
I don't think we are.
You're amending it for state mandates that came down. And a lot of them, there were a lot, you know, especially with the early voting, with the absentee voting, with the COVID restrictions about what those people had to do, how many people you had to have, their specific duties. It's just been a lot. It's been a whole lot.
Well, let's go ahead and prepare for the early amendment.
Okay.
At least based on salaries and operations, then we'll have that.
Okay. We can do that, and I can bring that before you at your next mid-month meeting, maybe a proposed amendment for election. Okay.
And I did tell, another subject I told, I know you guys have had one meeting, Sheriff Bowman to get with you because that's a whole nother.
It is.
Sheriff's budget is another animal by itself.
Ooh, it is.
I know he has some concerns about some things, you know. So, I said, well, get with Ms. McGlothlin so you know how to maneuver.
Right. So, in February, we'll start generating those budget templates. We're trying to get through January, get all the 1099s issued, get the W-2s issued, get everything for the calendar year closed out. And in February, we'll start putting together those budget templates. In the meantime, we have already distributed all of the capital improvement plan templates and information sheets so that departments can start looking at what their capital needs are so that we can update our five-year CIP plan. What we like to do is we like to get that done first so that we have those capital items already identified. And then sometime late February, early March, I'll send out the general budget sheets to all the departments and so that we can look at their operational needs and their personnel needs. And hopefully, all of their capital needs will have already been identified to make sure that that's what we need. And we can pull those from that CIP onto our general fund budget. So, and you're right. The Sheriff's Department, right now, there are, I believe, seven individual departments collectively that belong to the sheriff. And in early conversations, I'm understanding they might take those seven and do something different and merge them and maybe make four or five. I'm not sure what their total game plan is, but that will be something that we have to work out. And that'll be something new and different, especially when you try and compare from one year to another. If they take seven and merge them, we'll have to look at that in total so that we can get a good idea of what the total increase is. But we will be working on that in February.
Commissioner Gillard?
Just not on that, just another thing on the, Kim or Joey, on the census that I think was what, like 7,800?
Right.
Yeah. Are we finished with the census now?
We are, as far as the coordinator goes, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. And I was wondering, Joey, you know, I guess it was last year when they had the CARES Act, when COVID came in, and the extension of the census coordinator passed 2020, that wasn't of any doing of ours. I mean, it was extended by the feds, right?
The federal government.
Okay. So, maybe when these trillions start bringing that on, we can get something, we can get something from that to
Keep hope alive.
Yes, sir. I think Ms. McGlothlin mentioned it last time that we will reach out to the cities who are partners. We'll bill them proportion.
Their pro-rata share.
Pro-rata share related population, which is what they agreed to do in the original amount.
But I guess my other question is, so we keep hope alive that we could be compensated for that. But when the, when it, well, when they extended it, there was still activity by the coordinator during that extended time? Or it was just extended because of COVID and you couldn't get out and lock on doors? I mean, people were still working.
She was.
Both. Both. She did an amended plan for us that extended on that carrier for outreach, and we've got documentation of that. And the federal government did extend it solely because of COVID and not being able to get out and reach people to give census coordinators in counties a longer period.
But it's over now.
It is.
Twenty census is done, and we should be, I mean, because we're gonna have to get involved to see how much of Mayor's district gonna be mine this time because he got mine last time.
That's right.
Okay.
The president now will certify.
And with Commissioner Jones being new, we could probably get, if we don't get all this land, we could get all this money.
They should certify the census in January by law unless that's extended. And then I noted that on the state legislature, they've already appointed the chairman of the reapportionment committee. And so, once that's certified at Senate states, the state of Georgia will go into work, and we'll be getting those documents, too.
Okay.
That we can see what the census data revealed for blocks, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kim?
Yes, sir.
How much money, you said money was transferred out for the East End Fire Station?
Right.
How much, you know? Brown, you know?
Five hundred?
I believe it was, I believe it was half a million.
I think it was half a million. The reason that happened is when we, when we signed that note for the, because we knew we weren't going to have all of the money in splosts to cover the building of the fire station. So, we had to enter, we had to get a loan, but we couldn't deposit that money directly into sales tax six because sales tax six was prohibited from taking on debt. So, what we had to do is deposit the money into the general fund, transfer it out to the sales tax fund, but the debt on that will be paid by the general fund.
By the general fund.
Right. So, when you come into your budget next year, we will actually have debt service in the general fund.
Okay.
Along with that, what Commissioner Stevens called about, how about the equipment? Any equipment will be ordered for that?
No.
For the fire?
We're gonna transfer everything, all the, as far as
Existing?
Existing trucks to that station.
Existing, existing heavy equipment was not needed. It was transferred over. You did budget this year for some internal equipment that was needed there, operational equipment.
Uniforms and stuff like that.
I know a lot of the
Compressor.
The gear that they were, what is that called?
Gear.
Do they call it bunker gear? It's a certain type of gear. I know it's, I know it's very expensive gear, put it that way. It's not just gear. But yeah. But we did budget that in your general fund, so that was already in there, and furnishings.
And, yeah.
And furnishings. So, that was already part of your general fund budget. And that was one of the biggest increases in your general fund this year and the reason, primarily the reason for the millage increase. But we knew that.
Let me ask a question on those. And I don't know, Commissioner Gillard and I wrote it, looked it up the other day. We won't say where we were at the village, but
District one.
We were wondering, was there flag poles put out there?
There is. In fact, I haven't seen it, but I can't testify. I know that several weeks ago Clinton was scheduled to help directing this. I haven't looked at it.
I just wanted to make sure those were gonna be there.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chairman. Ms. McGlothlin, when was the Recreation Department going to be put into our budget?
In our fiscal year 2022. Right now, we're in fiscal year 21. So, when we go to do, adopt your fiscal year 2022 budget, Recreation will become a department within the general fund instead of departments in its own fund.
Okay. So, 22?
Right. Fiscal year 22, which you'll adopt this June.
Right. Okay. The other on, and you may have reviewed that earlier, on the government buildings, what was their reason?
The HVAC unit out at the East End Center?
East End? Okay. Okay. We finally got that?
Yes.
In there? Okay.
And I think she noted, too, we had, in your prioritized capital list, not that it was set aside in the capital fund. You had a prioritized list that called for change out of one of those vehicles, and we had to get a vehicle.
Yeah.
So, it's charged, obviously, to that department.
To that department also? Okay.
Our challenge, and correct me if I'm wrong, and once again, here, Board of Elections are here. As a growing community is trying to stay ahead. As we grow, services cost. And of course, as commissioners, none of us want to always go to the millage to cover, but services cost, so we have to be as skillful as we can be and we balance it so that the citizens are taken care of and looked after, which we all commit to doing, as well as us being good stewards and handling all of our funds the best we can because I don't see any stopping to the growth.
No. My department doesn't either.
Yeah. I mean, I would love to think, and I wasn't going to talk long on that. I would love to think we won't see another election like the one we just have. But who knows?
Who knows?
But who knows? So, we have to prepare as best we can for all those, all those kind of things.
And I think we even went back and looked at 2006.
We did.
Fifteen or sixteen to see, you know, what was the largest budget we'd ever had, and that was the previous election. But again, that was pre-COVID. So, I mean, you had to have more people. You had to have very specific things that were done that never had to be done before.
Yeah. I think most of us would agree, we're never going back to the old way.
That's right. That's right.
We're never going, there'll be some additional costs we'll have to bear.
Yeah.
Just to keep our employees safe and keep the public safe.
Twenty-one, twenty-one B.C., right?
You know, Ms. Chairman, I think in Georgia, they counted the votes like 12 times, didn't they?
Well, I know they had audits, and then they had reviews, and then they had something. I mean, yeah, you're right. They had to do it like more than once here, even though they audited it, they had to do it again.
Tell Commissioner Jones to get his running shoes on. Get his running shoes on. Got all these things up before. You got them on? Want to say something, sir? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I'll bring that amendment for you next time.
Appreciate it. I think the best way to handle that, go ahead and work that in. Better monitor that.
We know.
Engineering.
All right. I'm gonna get a little out of order on my list, if you don't mind. That way, we can look at the screen at the end. Austrian Promises, we've got all the fieldwork done for that for Commissioner Gillard. We're gonna be getting on, starting on design on that pretty quick. We're gonna come back to the Miller Park Fire Station in a few minutes. Memmon Lane is basically done. When Sykes Brothers gets back here, there's a little bit of asphalt that I want to put out on Homestown Loop Road where a crossing went. We'll take care of that then. So, this will probably still be on the list until I get that asphalt down on it. But there's, it's a good surface right now. We're good shape, we're operational, so we're just waiting on the asphalt to come. Yeoman's Road, we did have a pre-construction conference earlier this week regarding Yeoman's Road. We did a notice to be dated February 1st. They're gonna start about mid-February with some crews doing a few things over there. Third Street is basically done. The, they did a couple extra driveways that needed to get done earlier, and Andy Mock was out there today kind of doing a final inspection, making sure that everything's complete. The transfer station tipping floor, I think since I've been here, we've done that. That was a really fast and furious weekend. They showed up on a Friday a little bit before lunch. The solid waste department turned transfer station on, over to them about lunch. They cleaned the floor, stripped the concrete off of the top of it, put the new stuff down, and had it cured and ready to go by the following Monday. So, it was a long weekend, but they did a good job. It's a really interesting process. It's a 10,000 PSI concrete, so it's really, really hard. But they did a good job for us on that. Now, Mount Olivet Church Road, we did a pre-construction conference this week on that as well. We gave them a notice to proceed starting on February 1st. They're going to have an email from them where they're gonna do that. It's a different crew that's gonna start that than Yeoman's Road. They're gonna start that mid to late February. And as soon as that's over with, if we award Pioneer Road to them tonight, they would follow right consecutively behind Mount Olivet and do Pioneer because Mount Olivet is only gonna take them about two weeks' worth of work. The way they go through that process and do it, it won't take long. Pioneer Road, that's an action item. I'd like to go ahead and shift it till later on. We've been doing a little bit of work with EPD this month. They did an audit for a few things, and we had to gather some information and send over to them. I think probably next week, we'll probably have a phone call with them to wrap that part of it up. We have almost completed the Recreation Department ADA accessibility where we had to do some sidewalks and different things to different playstations at all our different parks. We were going through an internal review of it first part of this week, and we realized that there are some requirements for sidewalks to some of the batting cages, not batting cages, the dugouts. So, we are making modifications to do that. We were able to eliminate some other concrete in other places, so we should be about okay on budget with that. So, but I'm just gonna be next week, instead of this week, finish those plans. Need to bring a set of standard details over for you guys. Go over them with Mr. Brown and with Clinton, and then once everybody's happy, I would like to send it out to all you guys. Then I'd like to be able to adopt that here in the next couple of months so that as contractors come in and look to do something in our county that they have a standard set of specifications and details to go by that we haven't published in the past. Couple of things that we're making sure we have in there is compaction requirements on the roadways and testing. We have some minor testing requirements in there now, but we're gonna strengthen those a little bit so we don't run into roads that fail later. Solid Waste Convenience Centers, I think we presented those to you earlier this month, and I have Stormwater MPDS on here twice. Now, I'd like to go back, if you will, to the Miller Park Fire Station. Hope everybody can see that, okay? What we have set up is one of these, is the pointer, Joey? It's the middle one? All right. So, what we have set up is an administrative side and then five bays for different vehicles. The three outside bays are pull-through bays, and we have set it up so that we have access off of 84. There'll be a one lane in, and there'll be a left turn and a right turn out, so there'll be three lanes as you come in. That way, we can effectively separate private traffic coming into the administration building. They have to come in the same driveway because of just the way that everything lays out, but we can keep them as separate as we can. The private cars will come in, and they'll turn, and they'll go to parking in front of the administrative building there. The employees, except for a couple, will come around, and there's places to park in the back for the employees. Everything is set up so that all the trucks can come in, get in, back in, turn in, or maneuver in the front area and get in and out of the bays, as well as drive through the bays and get back out. Drainage, basically, there's a big ditch that cuts through here, and what we'll end up doing is modifying this ditch, let it come around behind the Solid Waste Convenience Center, and then get it over into, we'll and then get it over into, we'll dig a pretty big regional pond, and what that'll do is that'll give us our retention for our new facility here. We'll be able to do whatever improvements we do for the solid waste convenience center there, whatever improvements we do for Miller Park in the future. All of our impervious area that we add will direct over here into this pond, so we meet our stormwater retention requirements. So, this map is kind of an overall picture of everything, so that you can see some of the improvements for the park, you can see some of the improvements for the transfer sta-, not transfer station, convenience center, and just kind of how that whole facility will eventually lay out.
I know, we first, trying to come around, separate that traffic. The employee traffic, we rapidly realize that when you're coming in eighty-four, twenty-five, or sixty, whatever you're doing, and you're trying to find the fire station, once you see that you're gonna turn in, you're not gonna go down the road, it's probably got with defects right now. So that's the reason this was converted that way, and again, you mentioned the separation. This is the new inlet for the convenience center, and that's the reason we wanted to bring that to y'all early, and let those and bless those, so we could get that input for this model. It does include paving left field road all the way up and down, which is an unimproved surface right now. The other thing to look at too, that's important, I think the takeaway tonight, we want your blessing to move. I've got Rusty McCall ready to go in here and do the design on this station, which y'all indicated you want to go ahead and about getting cranked up, so you can get a cost on that. He's got the schematics and the needs assessment from the fire department guys on what the needs are in there, which we'll bring that back to y'all, once any kind of rough schematic is done. But the other important act goes back to the layout on the park, because I know Commissioner Stevens has seen this, it's in his district, and it was really, really, really on top of the splash request out there when we heard it. He mentioned last time, some challenges to some of the old equipment that's there, and if they are challenges. Mr. Martin has indicated that if the playground area stays there, he's ready to go ahead in the splash and go ahead and just replace that, which makes good sense. So I think what we're looking for is a blessing on the model. And I'll walk through, and Mr. Stevens, you correct me, basically the ball field lays in, it's pretty obvious. You've got parking in the front.
That's correct.
Read the notes, but basically this is where the old facility is, it goes away. There's a new pavilion built, I believe that's what this is, right?
Right.
That's correct, from reading the notes, that's what that is, and then you have extra parking in the back. You know, that's how that lays out. If you're comfortable with that, and comfortable saying, yeah, we think we want to proceed in this manner, we'll go ahead and at least start replacing with some of those things we've got money for now, and the splash to replace.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Trent, now where the road going to the transfer convenience center now, we already got a little side apron on the side of eighty-four. And right there where you got your deceler lane starting at, is that a deceler lane starting right past that road going?
Yep.
Right there.
Yes, sir, so.
What can we do with that?
You have this road here, then the deceler lane for this will start right there.
Right.
And so, the DOT requirements for the speed of eighty-four is a three-hundred-foot queue, which is a straightaway that's measured from this point of curvature to the taper. I'm only able to get about two-hundred and two-hundred-and-ten feet in there. So we'll have to get a variance from DOT to do that. Based on the operation and what it is, that's not really gonna be a real problem. And the number of turns that we're gonna have there every day will be fine. But it does push my deceleration lane back up here.
Okay, because some people are using that little side where the curve and gutter is at.
Right.
On eighty-four, they're using it as a deceler lane already.
Yes, sir.
And, but I saw that break right there when you pass that road, then you start your deceler lane again.
Yes, sir. So that will be used with whatever we do for left field road, we'll tie into that.
Okay.
Using that.
Let me ask a question right there, it's not too far up the road there to what is it, I guess it's Louis Fraser, Mr. Stevens?
Bill Carter.
Bill Carter.
Okay.
Bill Carter's not that far.
There's no decent, no turn lane in that right there.
Yes, sir.
So if you've got people coming from Ironsville area to go into the park, I mean, the fellow may say the fire station, but I mean, my concern is right there, Trent, is there's no, we need a deceler lane.
You mean the left turn lane?
Well, I'm just saying, for safety, for even the firemen, I mean, you get coming down the road, you've got the left-hand lane blocked, so that right there has gotta be, I don't know, DOT needs to be more involved in it than just the.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
We need that to be.
So we did look at that, and based on the number of turns for this facility and what we're doing here, it doesn't trip the requirements to install the left turn lane. You know, as we're going through this project, though, we can certainly look at trying to add a left turn lane in that area, and at least do enough left turn area, lane that we could accomplish both drives right there.
Well, I mean, what have you had, you had one fatality there within a hundred feet?
Two.
I mean, I don't know what trips what, but I'm just saying, we need to use whatever, you know, funds that we've got, let's fix it. I mean, if we can't fix it.
Yes, I'll be glad to.
I think it's a good point, I don't think, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there was any preclusion from us applying to G.O.T. to make that
Oh.
safety enhancement, possibly even bringing some safety funds, knowing the number of future.
Right. That's right. You know, there's nothing that says that we, I'm about to say this the right way. At this point, we don't trip it to make it a requirement, but if we want to do it, there's nothing that says you cannot do it. So we can certainly.
You know, right now, but I mean, it's like, right now, there ain't been nobody going in and out there except they're going to the transfer station.
Yes.
When you build a nice facility, there's gonna be more people coming in and out of it, I think that's money well spent, that's my feelings on it.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to look at doing that, that's.
Stevens?
Chair.
I think we'll explore that, and what'll have to happen is.
You heard that offer, didn't you? You heard that offer?
Yeah. Work through there, is it a right away without the fire, right away from all the owners to get in that turn lane?
But, and we'll probably want to try to garner some DOT funds to help us.
Mr. Stevens trying to get in, you know?
I heard your offer, Commissioner Wallen, I appreciate it, well-accepted. But, but, but in conjunction of what you're speaking about, this is a slam issue, one of the issues I've been speaking about for the last seven years, trying to get some deceler lanes at Bill Carter and Homestown and Bakentown and Butler Avenue and Midway. And we have had no success with it out of the state, now out of our representatives up there to help us obtain any money to do this, and it's very unsafe, so now I understand what you're saying, there's gonna be another spot that's gonna become very unsafe, so don't know what avenue that we need to take, but we need to look into it real seriously.
Yes, sir.
We'll wait on it, certainly.
It's in our divided highway plans over eighty-four that has no timeline on it. I know, but at some point in time, you should start at Midway and work your way all the way. Well, how far Joey, Louis Fraser School?
Actually, I think Stevens is aware that it addresses one of those areas, the D-Splash project that was approved, starts down there at Bakentown Road, which shop is, it extends all the way past Louis Fraser, to cover that area at least. But that's a start, that's just a start or something.
There's gonna have to be a lot of pipe, large pipe, from left field lane down going across that ditch, is that correct? I mean, you're gonna have to have some pretty good size, forty-eight inch, maybe sixty-inch pipe that goes.
I've already got.
I'm not talking about there, I'm talking about out there on the highway, coming off the highway into the fire station.
Yes. So, I'm kind of trying to fill you in a little bit, this is a thirty-six inch underneath the roadway. We've got forty-two, forty-eights here, because we're gonna be moving stuff that way. The, uh, the way we, this all grades out, we'll be able to use roadside ditches and drainage swales, so to speak, to get our water back into this big ditch, and not do as much piping as you might think. We will have a drainage pipe under the road right here. But everything will be set up to follow the current pattern that DOT has, and yes, sir, we are looking at a large pipe, and that's one reason you see such a large lagoon. You're absolutely right, that's.
Y'all need our blessing on this, Joe, is what you said?
Yeah.
On the concept?
Chairman, I make a motion that, do you need a motion or just a blessing? I make a motion to, we go ahead and move file with the plan presented for the fire station at Miller Park and the park.
Motion and second, we approve the concept as proven, knowing that it may be tweaked along the way. We just approve the concept, any further discussion, everybody clear? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed, all right. Have our blessing.
So that concludes my report, I do have Pioneer Road to do as a fine item next.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
But, Trent, I have a, you're gonna do Pioneer Road now?
That is whenever he wants me to.
Okay. I thought we were ready, sir.
Yes, sir, I was trying to, so we took bids on that back on January fifth. We received two bids, everybody should have a copy of the bid tabulation. The low bidder was from Sykes Brothers in the amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. We did review what they're doing, we did look at the workload and how they were planning on proceeding and being able to complete this project in a timely fashion for us. And we're concluded they'll be able to do what we need them to do. So our recommendation to the Board of Commissioners is to enter into a contract with Sykes Brothers in the amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents, plus a ten percent contingency.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Long, what was the length of time it would take?
The actual do that work out there is only two to three weeks. But I think we put in the contract ninety days.
Okay.
Now, what we're doing on that one is, we're using what's called a OPGI asphalt, and it's a real it's just a little layer of asphalt that has big aggregate in it, and it keeps cracking from reflecting up through to the new. And, you know, because there were a lot of large areas that just had cracking that was separated, that just was too much to just try to dig up and fix. So we went back and did the OPGI on that, and so that performs and does much better in the warmer weather, so doing it into February first, part of March will be good.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, any motion?
Yeah, Chair and Dana, motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the bid to Sykes Brothers for a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents.
A second.
Motion, second, we approve the bid presented by Sykes Brothers for the works to be done on Pioneer Road, point, by half a mile, basically. Any further discussion on the presentation?
Mr. Chair, just.
I'm sorry to understand.
The clay-based road, it's got gravel.
There are, there is some gravel, and there's some areas that have some clay, it's kind of mixed.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Mr. Long, just another question, I know I ask this all the time. So you already know what I'm about to ask?
About MWBE.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, with the roadway project that doesn't trigger the MWBE.
I.
I understand.
It's like a call and answer, call and response.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Even that, they don't have to.
But they.
It's a lot of things that I don't have to do, but I still do.
Right.
So, and I know I've mentioned it, and also about local participation, because for some reason, and I mean, I know they come in with the lowest bid, they come in with the lowest bid on all our projects.
Here like they have.
I can't speak for the rest of the commission, but can you relay the message, even that they don't have to?
I can certainly do that, that's not.
That he should.
I'll be glad to.
All right, appreciate it.
And I'll see if he can't give me, like, who his truckers are and those folks, that way he can
Something.
You know, give you some idea of what he's using.
Right, and then also, Mr. Chair, with our upcoming conference with all of us, can we, can we put that on agenda about an NWB, so we could relook, look at that? Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right, that's all I have tonight.
Yeah, I did have, I did have a question. Then we got a vote, too, right? We had a vote, okay, okay.
So he's not.
No, no, it was on the report.
All in favor of Pioneer Road project? All right.
I'm the chair, got two other things from Mr. Long before he walks away. I need you to look at Bill Carter Road.
It looks bad.
Yeah, it does, resurfacing, whatever it's gonna take, and also.
I actually came through there this morning.
Okay, good. I need you, so that means there's no charge for that one this morning.
That's right.
Also, I need you to check down there where the industrial authorities building it, they're coming out with probably fifty trucks a day, just before you get to the Dorchester School, it's breaking off the concrete, the asphalt, and it's creating a problem.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to do that.
We need to, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, hold the industrial authority responsible?
Yes, sir.
Hold the industrial authority responsible.
Yes, sir.
But not only hold them responsible, but they need to pay up.
And get that, whatever they damage, get fixed.
Yeah, it is breaking off the edge of the asphalt.
Yes, sir. No, I, I had some conversations about that this week already. I'm, I'm right there in agreement with everything you're saying, and I appreciate you saying that.
All right, I'll hold you responsible.
Whoop, this got a little heavier.
One of the things, Mr. Stevens, I talked with Justin again with DOT about the Tyson Road.
Yeah.
He said at Christmas that they were gonna be on, it's first thing in January. And it's twentieth, so he hasn't showed up, and he hasn't I haven't seen any action down there, just, if you can get in touch with him, tell him that.
And we're talking about the roadside ditches on eighty-four?
Tyson Road.
Right down there, Tyson Road. Yes, sir, I've ridden up and down there looking.
And I've talked to him.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, good rest to Wallen.
Mr. Chairman.
So I mean, if they're overbooked, that's fine, but.
Trent, that, the last thing I had, on your report, the standard detail, not when you give us that draft, that is gonna include like the relocation of the utility lines. If you recall on Melvin Lane, that, that project was at a standstill for six weeks or longer, just because
Yes, sir.
Just because of some phone line that we couldn't get central length.
Oh, yes, sir.
So that's gonna be in your, in the.
We have standard details about where they go.
Okay.
And where they get put in the new roads. So, yes, sir. And a lot of times what they're trying to do is they're trying to get on private easements and get out of the road, which is fine by us.
Yeah, just make sure that that's included, and speaking of Melvin Lane, if, before we spend, before I spend one more dime on it, if it costs another dime, let's just hold off until they redraw the district lines, and we'll let Marion handle it, because it's gonna be his either, either way.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't.
Go ahead and pave it, and then we'll transfer it over.
I spent ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent, but if it's, if it's gonna be anymore, let's wait until they draw the lines and let him pay the rest of it.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you very much, y'all have a good evening.
Okay.
All right.
And we have a young lady with us. Project Green Thumb, Lexington, Cozak, Baumgartner, did I say it right? Good to have you, good to see our young people come and present to us, so welcome, hope you just by sitting, maybe you learned a little bit about what the commissioners do, so we're happy to have you on our agenda today to present in your own way, so feel at home.
I appreciate it. My name's Lexington Cozak Baumgartner, or you can call me Lexi, but I'm a local four-Her in Liberty County, and today I'll be presenting you with Project Green Thumb, which is a project I've been trying to work on for a little bit, because right now, trees and green spaces are as important as ever for our environment, our health, and the stability of our communities. Liberty County can benefit not only Liberty County can benefit not only from beauty, but economically, physically, and mentally. Not only that, but we could be a part of the fight against climate change, deforestation, and habitat destruction. Now, my plan with this project is to try to do more tree plantings within the cities of Liberty County, as well as native plants, vines, that will not cause damage to buildings, fences, power, posts, and lines. Right now, and today I want to talk about the environmental changes due to human development, economic benefits to urban tree canopy, the effects urban trees have on stormwater, the effects poor landscaping has on our trees and green spaces, and the meaning of right tree, right place. So, uh, right now, we have about three trillion trees in the world. That's gone up around twelve thousand years ago, we had doubled that. The population has gone down by fifty percent. And that's due to the development of agriculture, deforestation, or, um, urban expansion. And now, you seem kind of far away. It's mostly, you see it more, you hear about it in the rainforest, that kind of thing, and the animals being affected. But it can't be closer to home than you think, and it can affect things closer to home than you think. For example, our bird populations. Heavenly bamboo is very common in landscaping. You see it a lot in the medians, and it actually has very toxic berries. The birds migrating through our area tend to gorge themselves on those berries when they get the opportunity due to the fact that they don't necessarily get to, they don't find food very often. And then they unfortunately die from poisoning. That also, uh, pesticides used in our gardens, green spaces, things are actually wiping out their food sources, causing to them to starve. Habitat loss, breeding ground loss, uh, and interference from storms, changes are all causing problems for them. And we've lost about thirty percent of our bird population already. Uh, and so, not everybody likes birds, especially when they poop on your cars. But, um, they, uh, so, not, this would benefit the animals, but we probably want to talk about how it'd benefit us as well in our communities. Economically speaking, uh, streets with, uh, streets with no shade have to be repaved twice as often as roads with tree cover. Uh, trees and green spaces add thousands to the worth of private property. And, yeah, shaded areas can actually decrease the temperatures outside, making it more enjoyable for people to be outside, of course. And, uh, you know, in Georgia, we need every bit of coolness we can get in the summer. Homes shaded by, um, businesses and homes shaded by trees can save up to a hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in air conditioning costs. And then there's stormwater as well. Uh, in urban communities, we have a lot of roadways that can cause a lot of flooding in our communities. And urban forests can help reduce rainwater because, uh, the forest floor actually acts as a sponge to absorb stormwater. Uh, in the same way, shrubs and trees planted along waterways, slows, floodwaters, and filter runoff from land. A thick urban forest absorbs excess rain that would otherwise flood flat surfaces. Let's be honest, when there are less trees, there's more stormwater runoff. Now, that's how it would benefit our community. Also, green spaces would benefit us as just an area to, you know, sit, have a meal, you know, get people outdoors, that kind of thing. That would go into our physical health because trees absorb pollutants, making cleaner, fresher air, of course. And in the cities, there is a lot of that. Uh, and when you breathe in that fresh air, it generally can give you a much, uh, feel-good, make you feel better a little bit. Being exposed to nature helps your body's immune system and boosts these fighting cells. Uh, green spaces and tree-lined streets encourage people to participate in more outdoor activities and living healthier lifestyles. So, and that's all well and good, but it's also been proven that it can benefit us mentally as well. Egotherapy is a slightly newer treatment that's been used with people who have minor anxiety, depression, and other mental health problems. That's been, it exposes exposure to forests and greenery, um, decreases mental fatigue, uh, and reali- relaxes you. It can help restore your mind. And we do have to take care of these green spaces and trees, of course. Landscape companies have used a lot of practices that are not necessarily healthy for our, uh, urban trees and green spaces, uh, such as topping trees or packing mulch around the bottom. This actually exposes them to fungi and insect infestations, which will kill the trees a lot faster. And then that is a cost to the community having to remove that dead tree. Another thing is it's very common for businesses and landscaping companies to use palm trees. Now, um, they're, although not harmful to our environment, they're definitely not beneficial. They produce much less oxygen than other trees and absorb much less ozone and carbon. Also, some palm trees are from very wet areas, such as the rainforest. These palm trees can absorb a lot of water and use way more than other species would. As well as they do not produce much shade. The palm tree itself is less related to a tree, and it's more closely related to bamboo and grass. Now, what a lot of experts like to use is the term right tree, right place. Uh, and right tree, right place is vital for the survival of our urban green spaces and trees. It's, different species of trees do better in different situations simply. And we have to pick the right trees for the right situation. For example, a very common mistake is to put flowering dogwood in a, somewhere where it has full sun. And the problem with that is they're very short trees that would normally grow beneath the tree canopy. So they like more shade, and that causes them to die much faster than they would if planted in a shady area. And it would help keep from killing trees, and again, save costs on then the removal of those dead trees. And so, there's a lot of effort we would have to put into developing our urban greenery, but at the same time, so much we could gain from improving it. Not only would we gain, but our furry, feathery, and scaly friends would as well. Now, I'm gonna leave you with this quote, which is a favor of mine, which is, "When the last tree is cut down and the last fish eaten, the last stream poisoned, you will realize that you cannot eat money." So, any questions?
Lexi, so this is a, a project of yours?
Yes, sir.
Would you be presenting this on some, some level? Other than to the commission?
I'm... What do you mean by that?
Like, like, is there a, a competition, like a 4-H competition?
Oh, um, I will be presenting a similar, um, presentation to DPA District Project, for District Project Achievement, um, which is a part of 4-H. I also presented to, uh, Liberty County, um, or Liberty County, Keep Liberty Beautiful, um,'s board meeting.
Okay. So you're making your rounds.
Yes, I'm trying to get the word out, trying to encourage support, because I want to try to get permission in the county to use, um, to be granted access to public property to use, to create these green spaces. Uh, maybe gardens for larger pieces, maybe just small, like a few plants, a bench, um, tables, that kind of thing, to benefit the community.
Well, thank you. I'm glad that you're interested, especially at such a young age, and you seem to have a passion for it.
Yes, I'm, I'm really hoping to try to go into it as a career. I want to go to college for environmental sciences, so, very excited.
Good for you, we're excited for you. Thank you for presenting to us. Now, see, that, that gentleman who just presented before you, he's our county engineer. So when it comes to all the ordinances that, 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 uh, involve trees and landscaping and all that, he, he, he and, uh, LCPC kind of helped keep us on the right track. I don't know much, we happen to see the hindsight, but Mr. Commissioner Gillis may have to chime in on...
Yeah, what I was thinking, um, and some of the developments that we have in the county and in the city, they are, and, um, the new ordinances are environmentally friendly. You know, may, maybe we can, um, get Lexi a copy of that. From LCPC, you know, when they presented, you know, like, the, that has less of an impact on the environment. Some of the things that we're requiring, um, developers to do when they cut down all the trees and go vertical with houses. There's some things that they, um, are required to do that would have less impact. So maybe that's something you'd be interested in.
Three points, is that right, Trent? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's some things we have in place. You just need to look at what we have and, and maybe give us some ideas of how we can improve it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Good to see young people involved, uh, other than doing this all day.
Mr. Chairman, were, were you gonna call Ms. Martin or she just?
I think Ms. Martin is ready.
I'm ready.
Good to have Ms. Martin.
I'm sorry I missed y'all after the November election, give you some tallies.
Let me, let me do this for you before you start. Kudos to the Board of Elections and the Elections Department for, uh, just the awesome management of our election process in the last election. We really appreciate how well everything ran. Could not have been better. And I'm not sure what happened other places, but we, we are proud of what happened here in Liberty County. We appreciate, please, please let everyone know.
I agree with you that, um, it turned out...
It turned out very well.
Did, Mr. Chairman, did you read it?
They're pulling, but it was, uh, interesting, and it was, um, you know, uh, done well, I thought, by all of the workers we had on board. I just think everybody did a...
Kudos.
And I certainly appreciate everything they did.
Thank you, ma'am. You gonna say something?
No, I was just saying, there was, um, and, and I know they did a good job, but I was wondering, did you read the letter to the editor that I didn't read about, um, the issues that still with the Board of Elections? I, I, I'm gonna read it when I get home. I think it came out yesterday.
Well, I would just like to say...
No, I mean, you, you don't have to discuss this. Just go ahead with your presentation.
I don't know where he voted.
Well, again, I, I mean, I, I didn't read it. I, I saw it and I scanned it, but I, I was out of town yesterday, so I'm...
He said Midway, but I went by there many times, and I saw nothing like that.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what happened with him.
Probably nothing, but...
But for that one, I had about five to that one that just said they had a wonderful experience voting. No weight, no this, no that. And everybody was very professional.
I didn't have any issues when I went down.
Thank you.
The gentleman also wrote one right after November, too.
Okay.
We had in November, there was sixty point eighteen percent, um, voting.
Wow.
And the total amount of Election Day voting was three thousand four hundred and ninety-one. The advance voting was twelve thousand two hundred and forty-nine. And the absentee ballots was five thousand six hundred and seventy-four. That is the mail-in ballots that those ladies worked extremely hard on. That was for the November election. For this runoff, I've never seen anything like it. There was, on Election Day, four thousand three hundred and fifty-one. And, uh, on advance voting, there was nine thousand four hundred and forty-three. Absentee ballots was four thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. There was also six provisional ballots. And that came up to a total of eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. For that. And in the main office for advance voting, there was six thousand and eighty-nine people that showed up over there in that little place. And at the complex in Midway, there was three thousand three hundred and fifty that showed up. And I don't know how they all did it, but they got it done. And I'm just proud of...
We are too. We share that.
Now, we're here to talk about this building. And I'm gonna tell y'all, we have a total right now of three thousand three square feet. That's measuring the Midway and over here. And we went, uh, Shannon and Rhonda and myself went on the fifteenth to Effingham County just to get an idea of what somebody else had and how they were handling things. Because they're a little bit larger than we are. They have sixty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-four was their population. Our population is sixty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four. So they're a little bit larger. But they're in a six thousand square foot building. Stands alone, not downtown. And, um, there have run out of space. They have not, they do not have enough space. They're going before their commissioners next month, I understood, to ask for at least three thousand square foot addition to their, um, current set, six thousand. We went there and there were a few things that, you know, we, oh. And if y'all will look, here's our, um, PowerPoint of what, um, is going on in this county. And we have come to ask for a larger building, warehouse with office space. Oh, this button, what do I do?
Let's see, Miss Leonard, the one on the right.
This one? Oh, okay, I got it. As you can see, this is where we do the adjudication and all of the accuracy testing and stuff. This is in a little tiny room. And we have to have, um, one person from each party and a board member in there, plus, um, two IT techs. And, um, the supervisor has to be there. As you can see, this is still more of it. Not enough room for anything. This is, um, this is the IT section. This section of the building doesn't even belong to us, but we've had to fill it up. And this is still their room. And this is, um, a part of that, um, server vault where the server and the little tiny room that we were just in. This is more of it. And y'all can see, we're on top of each other in there. And this is, uh, the common area being used. This is one of the hallways being used for storage. This is at the end of our hall. This is our break room that we can't get in. This is the, um, board conference room is what that was supposed to be, but it's now a storage area. And this is the place in Midway where we've had to store the carts and the cages that we use to transport stuff. And that, as you can see, is a very, very full space. Those carts are what our machine sits on, on...
How many of those carts do we have?
About a hundred and fifty of them. This is in Springfield. This is, um, their storage area. That everything was so organized, but they still didn't have enough room. Oops. This is their loading dock. And that's all the room they had, just, you could just walk through it. This is theirs, um, room where they, um, checked the people in when they were voting. And this, this is another part of it. Well, anyway, I don't know what the last slide was.
Ms. Martin.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It was a nice rug.
Oh, a nice rug.
That was it. Yeah, that was it.
Yes, sir. What were you saying?
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
So you're saying the storage cart is stored at Midway, right?
That and the big cages that we use to move all of this equipment, because it is very dangerous to move it piece by piece. So, um... So we engaged in buying those big cages, and we can move those without everybody having to handle each one of the pieces by itself, which makes it easier to transport and safer.
So, so actually, what I'm getting at, at each election, you have to go down there and get the carts, bring them back, or if it's down at the complex, you're right there, but also you have to wait. I mean, bring it all together.
But it takes.
It can be distributed out like it should be.
It takes two or three trips to get what we need down there, to up here to load the cages. And then the carts, they have to go back and they have to make two or three trips for that, so, I mean, it's so inadequate storage that we have. And I'm just gonna tell you, we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, and y'all were talking about the growth. We're gonna get no, more equipment if we start growing, you know, there's gonna be more equipment brought in, it would have to be.
Probably more equipment and more voting precincts.
Possibility, yeah. So we gonna have to have some place, and we need at least a ten thousand square foot warehouse and office space. And there's no place in downtown Heinzville for that. I checked the lots over there, there's no way you can get even a six thousand, which we wouldn't have enough space, because you saw what Springfield's got. And we'd have to have something, not less than nine thousand, but a ten, because why not? If you can, if you're building it, why not go ahead and project for the future? Because we are growing, it's gonna continue, and we're just gonna get more and more equipment. But I don't understand. And I think the ladies and gentlemen that worked over in that office, they have worked in no space long enough, it's been a whole year, and we have got to do something. We cannot ask those people to continue working where there's no space for them to work. I walked in the other day and the lady was trying to alphabetize stuff, and she was down on the floor. She didn't have room to do anything. And, and it looks kinda jumbled up and it doesn't really give a good eye to the voter that comes in with all that jumbled up stuff in there. They wondering, you know, why aren't y'all doing better? Where's my tax dollar going? So we need to move forward and find a building, a warehouse with office space, because it's not going to be workable to have the office over here and store all the equipment somewhere else. Because when you do L and A, you have to do, get stuff out of the office that you, you know, didn't think about. And things changed. This year, there were a lot of changes in the elections. And we don't know what's coming down the pipeline for the next one.
Ms. Martin, did the, did the new machines cause you to have this major storage problem, these new machines?
Exactly, it takes six pieces for one vote, where before it took one machine for one vote. And it's just, who knows?
Mr. Chairman, I, I remember whenever we first was discussing this, with, you know, the, some of the unfunded mandates coming down from the state and about the new machines. And I remember then, we knew we were gonna be here. And I mean, our, our next largest election is what, in two years now? Where, and again, I don't know where we are, what we could do, but.
Yes, it was state election.
Absolutely, I mean, of course, you know, the municipal, right. But I, I, I know we, we have to do something, because, I mean, I've been over there, it's really, it's really tight. And with it, with the increase of, of our population and also the increase, which is always good, the increase of more people going to vote, I mean, we have to, to do something. And, you know, not, and again, I appreciate everyone over there, from, from the board to, you know, our employees, because, I mean, in, in my, in my couple of years that I've been here, I've, these last couple of elections have been ran very efficiently, where, you know, we didn't have to wait too long to see, you know, the outcome and the results. So whatever we could do, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what we can do, but I, I do know they need more space. And then we'll end up renting some space and then, I don't, I don't know.
What I'm led to do, and y'all chiming in, is to create a committee, Mr. Brown and myself and Ms. Martin, and someone else from your, maybe Ms. Rhonda, whomever from the, and, and Commissioner Hoover would like to.
I'll do it.
Would like to do that, Commissioner Thrift? Maybe, let's see, how can I have three commissioners? So myself, Commissioner Thrift, and one more?
Never mind, I, I knew Ms., never mind, he got it.
You don't wanna group too big, but to be a think tank and then come back and present to the commission. Now, you know, we always lean on Joey so heavily, the, the easiest thing, and probably the most prudent thing for us to do would be to put in the next round of SLOSS. But that's how many years from now, that's three years?
A while.
That's a while.
You know, what, what I had kinda made a note to go ahead and do, because we had been looking at some kind of, at least breathing room until we got, I mean, we've looked around. Ms. Lyndon and Shannon and a lot of us been engaged in trying to find freestanding current space that would meet the need. It's, it's not there, it's not there, so. I, I made a note to go ahead and let's be looking in confidentiality about land acquisition, as we normally do, and, and go on ahead and look at, you know, a building with the financing. I know Springfield's is really a standing metal seam, pretty, pretty standard building to be able to build. So if you'll allow me to work with the committee, I'll go ahead and be looking around at some things. I do wanna talk with Ms. Martin and others about logistics, which are very important, both to them and to the voters, though, about where that could be located, so.
But we need parking, too, that is a very large issue on elections for the early voting. The people with walkers and crutches and they have to park down there in front of the purple building and walk up here, you know. There's just not enough handicap spaces for the handicapped around here. And I personally don't see where it needs to be on this busy street here. It needs to either be off on a side street or out on the edge of town, it don't need to be downtown.
Be glad to work with her on all those specifics and, and get, get their input as where's, as well as all the requirements on handicap, plus some, for whatever y'all need.
Well, you know, something that comes to mind again is that I want it to be something that's gonna last.
Yep. Yes, it needs to do that and it needs to be somewhere.
Let's not throw something up quickly.
Add to it down like you do, you could do that.
All right, we'll, we'll put the, let's see, Commissioner Thrift, myself, Ms. Stevens, Joey. And you, ma'am, and then whomever, I'll let, your board, some of your board members are here, I'll let you all work that out, who you would send.
All right. I call you or you call me? What are we gonna do?
Call Joey.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look first, rather than sit around and kinda talk. I'd like to get with you about the specifics of what you saw in Springfield and the specifics of layout.
Gonna fine tune it a little bit?
Type things, some building requirements, much like we're talking about on the fire station.
Now, something you said touched my heart, too, because I remember this from my schoolboy days. You're right, it doesn't have to be, I'm, I'm a Heinzvillian, didn't have to be in Heinzville.
Correct.
But I would like it something centrally located in Liberty County.
As central as you might get it.
Right, exactly.
We don't need it down in Midway, and we don't need it out in Waltireville, Allenhurst, but, you know, somewhere.
Most of the lot is based on property availability, wetlands.
Oh, yeah, if you allow me to look at them out.
I mean, in the town, there's a lot of property in Flemington for sale on the highway out. So I'm just saying, I did notice a lot along the way.
We'll, we'll, we have several options, okay, yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you guys, the message, good to see you, Mr. McIver and Mr. McKesson, Ms. Terry, good to see y'all, thank y'all for what you do.
And our meeting is Monday at four o'clock, if anybody cares to.
As long as there's not a quorum there of the commission.
Yeah.
Then that's okay. And then we'd have to notice the commission meeting, so.
We got Sherry.
Yeah.
They could be Johnny Q Public.
Unfortunately, they don't get pulled over.
Thank you, Ms. Martin and Commissioner, good, good to see y'all.
No, you don't have to leave.
Work on it, because we can't go through another election.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it won't be anything bad actually.
City elections in Flemington will be coming up in the fall.
Y'all feel something before March.
And then next year will be county and state elections.
We'll get there.
I hope we get there before then. In twenty-four, we can't survive over there.
We do our level best. Don't wanna promise you something that I can't keep. All right, thank, thank you again. G-DOT contract resolution.
Yes, sir, y'all, y'all basically were briefed on the hangar expansion project out at Midcoast Airport. And at that time, what the county commission was gonna do was borrow the funds along with the other partners to do that. So we visited with the other partners, y'all approved contingent on that, they approved that. The good news is that when we went back to G-DOT and wore out some pants with the knees, they agreed to put more money in. So there was gonna be a delta on what you borrowed and what you had to pay back over and above what the hangar rent would bring in. The good news here is, now that G-DOT has kicked more money in pursuant to y'all approving the resolution tonight, the hangar rents alone will pay that loan over a three to four year period instead of five. And so, so it's great news, but formality for the G-DOT contract, which is ready to be sent down, we just need, I think you've got a copy of the resolution there before you, the contents of it.
I saw it.
We just need a motion and a second to really formally, for the G-DOT contract purposes, approve what you've already approved.
Mr. Chairman?
I will entertain it.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Question, second, we approve the G-DOT resolution. Thank y'all advice clear. Mr. Gentlemen, I know some things are new to you, but I promise you, you, you'll catch up. And some things will always be new to you. All in favor of approving the resolution that's presented, raise your hand. Mr. Brown, while I'm thinking about it, and I, and I apologize, doesn't SLOSS allow you to, let's say if we built them, they're building now, we could obligate the next round of SLOSS for the debt?
As long as the referendum that's approved has that issuance in Senate, you can do that. The one that you're in now does not have that in it, that's the reason it couldn't be used to backfire station data.
So I was just thinking of, okay. Uh, announcement, sir?
Uh, announcement, sir, just ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock at the fire station. Bring your rubber boots, not for firefighting, but for rain. We'll be doing that inside the bay, distance, grab and go. Uh, the work starts on the boardroom next week. So we've made them aware of two meetings that have to be held in here, which is y'all's and the Board of Assessors. Uh, so Commissioner Stevens, don't cut off that into the cabinet, but you should still be able to function.
As long as I don't have Justin around me.
Uh, and it'll be, as we discussed, really, those guys are wanting to get here and knock it out. Cabinet being the hardest thing, but they're in design and, man, I'll go out on a limb and say within forty-five days at the most, that'll be completed. There's some underground cabling, or underfloor cabling, little bit of a challenge that we gotta work through, but that's who'll tear out first so we can access, so that's good news. Head start mobilized to the site, they're on construction. That groundbreaking, you remember, is next Thursday at eleven o'clock in the morning. Uh, we have gotten a topo of the road shop area so that we can start doing some planning on that. Uh, we've also gotten some floor plan layouts from some recent facilities that were done in Effingham and Estatesboro. So Clinton's taking a look at those to try to come back to y'all with a program design of what ought to be in there. And then we'll be coming back to that topo to show maybe a layout, just like this Miller Park deal, of a site plan layout, to get your blessing before we move forward with any kind of formal design on that. Uh, last thing is, Mr. Simonton came by today, this wasn't part of Mr. Long's report, but the Welburn Street drainage project, I signed those contracts today. He'll be issuing notice to proceed, having the pre-con, and he's gonna send me a schedule, which I'll forward out to everybody that you'll have. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything else for good order? Chairman, the motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Okay.
Right.
All in favor?